Good evening. It's now six P M. Welcome to the Henry County Commissioners Meeting for November twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four. If you would please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance and a short prayer.
United States of America.
Heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting, we ask you for your wisdom and guidance in our deliberations. May we approach each issue with fairness, compassion, and commitment to serving our community. In your name we pray. Amen. Have the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes of the last meeting? If so, is there a motion?
Motion to approve minutes is presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Have the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the claims?
Motion to approve claims is presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Have the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the payroll?
Motion to approve payroll is presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We have received an executive summary report from the Innovative Technical Solutions dated October twenty-twenty-four. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three-zero. We have three food and beverage claims. The first one is for the E D C V I P Project affidavit number twenty-sixteen dash eighty-eight M L Taylor Construction invoice number one zero nine three five for one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion to approve claim is presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three-zero. We have a second and third claim that's for the Veterans Museum. The first one is affidavit number twenty-sixteen dash eighty-nine Amazon reimbursement invoice number one-one-one dash five-two-zero-five-two-two-one dash four-five-six-four-two-zero-one for six hundred ninety, six hundred seventy-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. This third is also a food and beverage claim. It's affidavit number twenty-sixteen dash nine-zero Walmart reimbursement invoice number two-zero-zero-two-one-two-six dash eight-five-seven-nine-six-eight-eight-nine-eight for two hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. In regards to food and beverage claims, number two and number three, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Both claims is presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero. We do have Angela Cox here with the Henry County Health Department. Angela?
Hello?
Hello.
Um, we do have a few things to report. Um, so question first, though. Will you be having your meeting, the first meeting in December during the day like at ten?
Yes, it'll be at eleven o'clock.
At eleven o'clock. Okay. Um, I'll have Shay Beck's and Miranda Wright.
It's on December the eighteenth.
Okay. They're gonna come and um, give you an update on Live Coalition and they were able to um, narrow down and they have chosen the six candidates uh, for our students that are going to go to the um, CADCA Conference in February in Washington, D.C. So I won't steal their thunder, but know that those very bright young people have been chosen and it was a very difficult decision. Um, very difficult. So we're very proud about that. Um, then just upcoming, uh, after the first of the year, I want you to know that uh, the Health Department will be ho- hosting a little bit of an open house. We've been really busy making some changes in the building that most of you are Commissioner-wise are aware of, but we want to invite the public in to kind of see the Health Department because I don't think a lot of people, unless you have business there, have ever really walked into a Health Department to see. So um, we're really excited to kind of show you some of the, the new things and show you around and um, one of our biggest moves was our Environmental Health Office, who uh, when it was just a couple of people, started out upstairs in, in one of the smallest offices upstairs. We grew a little bit and we had to come downstairs to Suite one oh one, which was really nice because we were right here on the corner of Twelfth and Race, but then we exploded. And so we have moved into the old E M A office uh, to the back corner of the building and we just want to kind of put that out there so that people can really find the mainly birth and death records because that's probably our biggest foot traffic that'll come in. So we'll make an announcement about that and invite you all over and all the staff um, that worked for the county as well. Um, and then we will be presenting um, at the next meeting, the uh, three key performance indicators, if you want me to. Okay, so this is related to Health First Indiana Funding. And so the state put out all these like fifteen different key performance indicators and all these different sections of public health. But what we were charged with for twenty-twenty-five was to come up with three or four very specific health issues that we felt Henry County needed to address immediately. And so we have narrowed those down to three. Um, more isn't always better. I want to do three and I want to do them well. And we'll be giving you a, a very short synopsis and presentation of how we came to that conclusion. Um, and, and share with you and the public what those key performance indicators are and all of the different people that will be involved. A lot of them are already involved um, with things. But I will tell you that um, we're looking at um, overdose uh, trips to the E R as one of them. And we are looking at vaping in our youth as one of them. And then we will also um, prenatal smoking. Those are the three. So more to come with that. And then after the first of the year, I've been working with Mike Sutton at um, I D O H. And he's asked for a few counties to consider holding a community forum to kind of kick off the um, twenty-twenty-five full year of the budget coming through and share with the public what that means for our county. Okay, it's not just money that's coming in and you know, we're not doing, you know, putting new curtains up everywhere. We've hired staff. We have a plan. We have to have a health plan turned in by the middle of December, um, which is about done. And that will go over all of the key performance indicators um, that the people in the legislature are looking at. And that's just another key thing that um, we want to drive home when we do this very short presentation is that um, our numbers will, you know, affect whether, all, all ninety-two counties, whether we are making improvement or not, is going to keep this funding coming. Um, and we do preface everything with it didn't get this way overnight. Um, we didn't get to be forty-seventh in the state with prenatal smoking, you know, even in the last ten years. It's been more than that coming and changes slow. Um, so we were very uh, pointed as to what we felt we had some type of leverage over that we could move that needle, however small it might be in twenty-twenty-five. Um, so we're, we're hoping for um, input and transparency with the public and to let you know that your Public Health Department is what the plan is, how we're working the plan, how people in the public can help, um, and all those things. Okay. Then the last thing is, uh, and I'm going to take this over to Debbie and Bobby, but uh, we would like to apply for a grant through the National Association of City and County Health Officials, um, Nate Joe for short, or Nacho as Bobby likes to call it. So when Bobby calls and says, hey, what's this Nacho? I said, gotcha. And uh, it's a forty thousand dollar grant that it's um, coming through the C D C federal funds. And we should know by the middle of December whether we were chosen for it or not. And it has to do with um, immunization, education, and communication. Uh, just across the United States, you know, if you're looking at any kind of um, national news, you'll know that we are seeing these little pop-up uh, issues with measles. Um, and it, it's, it's just continuing to become more outbreaks. It's beginning to hit places that, you know, not just in the Northwest where we have a lot of um, anti-vax uh, sentiment up, up in that particular area. It's kind of everywhere. Um, and we're having other, other communicable diseases that have been put at bay by immunizations for many, many years. We're starting to see little pop-ups of those things. And so one of the things that this grant would help us do um, is to do a much more robust education um, flyers that get mailed out, you know, like the politicians send out, those things like that. Um, those are very valuable. We've found that out uh, through our um, mental health fair and um, paper, newspapers, and just community forums that we can hold with that. So that's the reason we're wanting to do that. And paperwork.
So I'm going to make a motion to allow Angela to get a grant number and apply for this grant.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three-zero.
Any questions for me?
Uh, your statement of work.
Statement of work.
Was that you? I thought that was you. You said, uh, with Oxtol?
Huh?
With Oxtol?
Statement of work with Oxtol. I had sent you, so we have. Oh, okay. So with, it's a contract, that's a renewing contract and it did make a change because we've added the number of computers that we have. So I sent it to you just as a preliminary review and then I knew that it was already on the books, but because there was a change in it, I figured I needed to bring it to them with the new rules for contracts, correct?
When you reviewed it and?
It was.
Changes the number of computers. Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve the statement of work with the Public Health Department and Oxtol Systems.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three-zero.
Thank you. Um, and just for the public's sake, that we do contract with Oxtol Services for our I T, um, because we just have a hu- a huge need. Um, that would be a great burden to your current contract. And so we've had them for quite some time, um, with the confidentiality and HIPAA laws as well. Um, there's kind of extra things that go into that, so those are all taken care of. Files are backed up securely off-site, um, that sort of thing. That's why we do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Did you get your foyer area ceiling looked at yet?
No, I still have a huge crack in the foyer area of Suite two oh eight. I've not heard from Greg or any type of individual as far as a contractor to come look at an estimate or anything.
You happen to know of anybody? Cause I don't. And that was the question that was asked me by maintenance.
Okay. I do not know of anyone in the discussion. So in Suite two oh eight, when you walk in and you look up at the ceiling, there is now this giant crack that goes across it. Um, which we're concerned is a kind of a safety issue. So we've moved all seating to the opposite side of the waiting room and put a table and, and the air scrubber thingy over there so people can't stand directly under that particular place. And the concern is that it is the old stone. It's not just drywall up there. And so um, I don't think our maintenance, nor anybody that has been helping that, you know, just with painting and some minor constru- construction has um, any comfort level with doing that. So yes, I am in search of then a contractor who has skill set with older buildings and the stone walls and the stone ceilings um, out there to get an estimate. I'll reach out.
Okay.
To a couple of people and see if I can get that going.
I didn't know if anything more had been said to you after I'd sent Greg over.
No, not after you night, not after I called you over and showed you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I knew that you had talked to Greg, but.
Okay.
I didn't know if we've had people.
Follow up on that.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think you can roll all the way down to. Where did you have anything from Memorial Park?
Well, we're getting done with digging the muck out and they're starting to bring in the field dirt for around the edges of the pond. And they was hoping to be done by Thanksgiving, but they've had about twelve days of weather-related stuff, so it's going to be just a little longer than Thanksgiving. Other than that, it's going pretty good. And it's starting to look a lot better. You got any questions?
I was out there yesterday watching them, watching the progress and it looks like they're definitely making progress when they have an opportunity too with the weather.
Yeah, yeah. So it's starting to come all together.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Brian True.
Lisa Loveless.
Lisa Loveless. Stand by, Brian. Good evening, Lisa.
We are getting new software installed and training the week of December sixteenth through the twentieth. We would like permission to close our office for a lunch hour those days during that week.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't either.
I'll make the motion. I don't think we even have to make a motion, but just make sure you put notes on the door and let the public know.
Okay.
It's just for lunch from.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna still be there. We're just gonna lock the door so we can focus on the training.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian True, on your feet.
All right, I'm back with what we talked about a few weeks ago at the last meeting. I think everything is ready. Kind of got three different parts here. We've got the Motorola proposal. Um, Joel reviewed that. We had one change that Motorola made and sent back. Um, Joel said he was good with everything as far as that goes now. Um, so that's one piece of that. Um, as far as that, that's for the wireline connection for the radio system to the state. We're currently in a wireless connection. This moves us to a wired connection. Um, kind of gets us ready for the future so we can do some things we can't do today, um, that we need to do to grow and get better, really. Um, the next piece of it is uh, from Nelson Systems. It's a separate quote, but it is what makes our current recording system compatible with these upgrades. Um, if we don't do that, we will not have the capability to record everything that these upgrades will give us. So that takes care of that and makes sure that a hundred percent of all radios will be able to be recorded. And then the final piece I've got here is financing. Um, the Motorola portion, I would like to finance. And I've asked for three different uh, quotes. One was from Motorola themselves. The second, I reached out to the Indiana Bond Bank and the third was Citizen State Bank. Um, out of those three quotes, Citizen State Bank was the best rate. Um, and I'm looking at doing a five-year financing term on these. The Motorola portion is what I would finance and then the Nelson Systems portion, I would just pay all of that upfront with current funds. And the Nelson Systems also includes a few years of maintenance. When we got our recording system put in, the beginning of this year, we had prepaid for like five years of maintenance, so we don't have any ongoing costs with them. And this quote also includes the same amount of maintenance for this add-on. Um, so there should not be any ongoing costs for the next few years for the recording system. That's, I mean, unless you have specific questions, that's really all I have. I think we're to the point where I'm asking for the okay to do all of this. Um, not sure what more you may want to know, but.
Is this going to be outdated before you get it paid for?
Say that again.
I said, is this going to be outdated before you get it paid for?
It shouldn't be, no. I, I, I will say with the, with our radio and phones, we're kind of on, I think, I believe it's a seven-year cycle. We had some issues with that the last time. I think the financing term was ten years, but the equipment maintenance was only seven. So when we got new equipment, I believe it was, can't remember if it was the end of twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty-two.
Somewhere around there.
I would say twenty-twenty-two.
We redid it for seven years. So, and that was also my thinking of the five years on this. That takes us to roughly about the same term we have left on the existing loan for the phone and radio equipment. Once these are both paid off, obviously, we're going to be at the end of our seven years and it's time to look at redoing everything again. But generally, we've been paid off all of our loan payments and freed up that money to start the cycle over again. That's basically the life cycle of this and the.
So everything is, is on the same cycle now?
Exactly. It's all on the same cycle and this keeps it always under warranty and under maintenance agreements.
So Joel, with the financing, does the council need to approve anything for him to move forward?
Yes, they probably will or something in the process.
Okay. Last one, I want to make sure that we get everything.
Proper steps.
Yeah, proper steps uh, going.
Yeah, I've got, as far as the Nelson Systems quote, I, I've got the funds to do that one without any issues. For the financing portion, obviously that would at some point need some additional appropriations. Um, talking to the bank and Motorola and everyone, um, a timeline we're kind of looking right now is, I, I don't think of, I'm looking at quarterly payments probably for the loan. I don't think they would have a payment due until March, probably. Um, so we've got time to get through the process to get appropriations before we'd ever have a payment due.
I, I will make the motion to approve the agreements with Motorola and Nelson and uh, I'll do this in separate motions. So I'll make the motion for Motorola and Nelson agreements to be approved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three-zero.
And then looking at this, it's the Citizen State Banks have the best terms, so I will make the motion to approve uh, starting the process to go through financing with Citizen State Bank.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three-zero.
All right.
And then the only other thing that we, is the radio use agreement. Um, I know you've done this. I will tell you, the only thing I added was a signature line for the volunteer fire departments to sign at the bottom, so that he has one for each, each of that. Um, I always like to tell you if I make a change to your document, yeah, that's the only thing I changed. So if you want to explain what the radio use agreement is.
Yeah, so we uh, previous to me, Butch had done a grant um, that got us thirty-two portable radios. Uh, the intention is for two of those to go to each of the sixteen volunteer fire departments. Those are in and we're working through the process of getting those programmed now and should have those complete soon. Uh, the M O U is to go to the fire departments, basically when they receive the radio, just to say that we retain ownership of the radios since the grant is through us. Um, and basically specifies we may on occasion need a picture or to see those for grant reporting purposes and such. Um, yeah, just when we give the radios, they'll sign the M O U stating they understand they belong to us.
I will make the motion to approve the radio use agreement.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Mandy.
I am just coming back with a different quote. I did find a much better deal. I think it should be in here. Now I have copies. This one is for Rico, which um, Brian turned me on to. He said the city uses them and after going through everything that they sent, and I did also get with Leap and Weber, um, and then compared all of those. This is by far the best deal for a couple of reasons. It's cheaper monthly, but they're per copy price, which is where we get hit. Um, we have an abnormally large amount of print copies that we do. Theirs is a third of the cost. So I did some math and I don't know if she sent you guys that with, if you guys have the Braden invoice that I sent, for example, my most recent. So if you look on there where I've written, that one eighty-five eighty-five is actually cheaper than what I paid this last month just for copies. And that's going to be, that's if I ran every one of those copies and still paid that payment, I'm still going to pay less than I'm paying for Braden right now. So it was the best deal, so. I'm glad she told me to, I could look somewhere else, because that's basically not going to cost us anything that I'm not paying now. And then in five years, you just purchase it for a dollar and it, I believe it can be under contract, kind of like Braden for five more years after that, and then it ages out after ten, so.
I'll make the motion to approve the Rico agreement for B M S training.
So we're supposed to be going by the chicken scratching that you've got on the side of this is the?
Yes, I have poor writing. Thank you for pointing that out so everyone knows that now.
Well, I was trying to make, decipher what I was reading here, so.
Was, yeah.
It was my scratch, but then I was like, you know what? That would be handy for them to have, so I should include that, because I was doing figures, but I was like, oh, that's.
You paid two hundred and, what'd you pay this month? Two hundred and seventeen dollars for your copy fees?
Yeah, just for the copies.
Just for the copies.
Just for the copies. So.
One eighty-five eighty-five is for everything, your payment plus the copies.
That would be, that would be if I paid for all those copy, copies and paid for the printer.
Yep.
And it comes in less than I just paid for the copies.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that Debbie, you have anything? Oh, Debbie does have, my goodness, Debbie does have something.
Bill Upchurch and I request that on December the twenty-seventh, we close our offices to the public so we can balance out for the end of the year. We'll, I mean, everybody else to be here, we'll just be closed to the public so that we can balance out for the end of the year.
And I think we've done that over here. I'll make the motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero. Thank you. Next, we're going on to the proposals. We have one proposal from Resolve Tech to install a new five-ten system in the Masonic Lodge Building Proposal Number four-five-six-one-zero-dash-two-zero-seven-dash-five-two for a total of thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
I think in that building, we've replaced every furnace now. Is that right, Steve?
Uh, no. Close to.
Close to every furnace?
One or two more, I think. But yeah, everything else within the last four years has been replaced. Like, we have one more on the third floor that's getting close, but as long as it keeps working, we'll leave it alone.
The only question I have, Debbie, is, is this something that we have the money to pay this year if the bill comes in? Will we need to wait till after the first of the year?
Nope.
I'd say we wait till after the first of the year, because then I'm not gonna get it done before then anyway, so we probably won't get built until after the first of the year. So with that, I'll make a motion. We go ahead and, cuz it has a cracked heat extanger, I know that for fact, so I'll make a motion to approve this quote.
I'll second it.
Motion.
It won't, it won't. I'm sorry.
This won't be a bond?
No.
It won't come out of the bond?
Come out of the.
Renovation.
Oh, the DLZ bond? Well.
I mean, if it has to, it does. I mean, I figure it'd be part of, part of maintenance.
We could, we could take it out of the DLZ bond.
I figure we can revisit that when we get the bill. If that's what it needs to do, we can pay it out of there. If not, we pay it out of general maintenance.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero.
Cuz there was some HVAC on that one over there, was there, Steve? I'm, I'm trying to remember all the projects. This won't be, and with the holidays and everything, I doubt that they get this in and done and built before the end of the year.
I don't think they will.
I don't either.
And yeah, I, I don't remember if there was HVAC on the Masonic and that DLZ. I'd have to look at that, too.
Next, under new business, we have the Y O C lease agreement withdrawal.
So I received, and you guys all received this as well, November the twelfth, dated November the twenty-first, from the Youth Opportunity Center. I'm trying to see who it was. Jeff Helms, Chief Executive Officer. This letter is intended to serve as notice that Y O C is withdrawing from the lease agreement for the building formerly known as Henry County Youth Center, and will vacate the building on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. I don't think I need to read the whole thing, do I, Joel? So at the end of the year, they are vacating the building. They will return the keys. All of that, they did give us an estimated of what cost utility, that type of stuff that they have paid on a twelve-month basis. The question became, because the community foundation had provided them a grant for furniture and some other items, and then the school had provided, I have a list here somewhere. The school had provided computers. Sorry, let me get to where I was going. The school had provided, when we moved into the building in June, we took furniture and items to be in a typical classroom. They have twelve, fifteen student desks, three teachers' desks, two, two teachers' chairs, three to, two to three large tables, two or three filing cabinets, tech items, computers, smart boards, Elmo miscellaneous items, books, calculator, et cetera, which they will, they would want to, once they move out, be able to go in. Sorry, my microphone, and retrieve these items. I'm not certain as to all what the community foundation granted, but they'll want to look to see if they want any of that stuff back that was granted, cuz their grant was written in a, a way that if they left, they would return all of the items purchased with that grant money. So this is really more informational that as of December thirty-first, the Y O C True Harbor will be out of that building, which we're looking to potentially reopen that as a detention center, youth center. Do we need to probably send them a letter with letting them know what the school needs and the community foundation? Yeah, what everything is, and inform them of everything that needs to be returned or accounted for. I think I sent you that list. And I guess I can have the community, I don't know if the, if we should take the community foundation out there beforehand to look at stuff, or. Or we can take, we're out there December the ninth, we can get a list from them then.
So what is our requirement and acceptance of this letter?
Really, there isn't anything you have to accept. They were on a month-to-month term.
Right.
They could terminate these at thirty days, you know, this, and they'd give required of this.
More information, it's more informational.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we good to move on, then?
Mm-hmm.
Next, we have item number two, Memorial Park Board of Trustees, Greensboro Sand and Gravel LLC.
So this is the, an agreement between the park board and George King and the commissioners on his, the dirt that is coming. This is to confirm that you will provide soil material to be used for bank stabilization at the Henry County Memorial Park Project. The material shall be compactable and clean as well, similar to C1. Is that ML-dashCL and SC? This classification is used as, is as used in the universal soil classification of material. It's estimated that you will provide two hundred triaxial loads, forty thousand pounds. The price to provide this material is a hundred and fifty dollars per triaxial load. This price includes stockpiling, loading, and other incidental items to provide this material. Your invoice will be provided to Henry County Memorial Park Board to be approved as a claim, which will be reviewed by the Henry County Commissioners for payment. So this is the agreement between the park, us, and Greensboro Sand and Gravel for dirt for the park project.
And the second one, which is item number three, is Memorial Park Board of Trustees, Lou Thornburg Trucking.
So this, this is to confirm that you will, to, to Lou Thornburg Trucking. So this is an agreement with Lou Thornburg Trucking, the park board, and the commissioners. This is to confirm that you will transport soil material from Greensboro Sand and Gravel to Henry County Memorial Park Project, provide bank stabilization material. The transporting shall be done with triaxial trucks, forty thousand pound per truck at a rate of a hundred and ten dollars per truck load. You will coordinate loading and transporting to Memorial Park Project with Greensboro Sand and Gravel and project manager, R.B. Jurgens. It is estimated that two hundred triaxial loads will be needed for bank stabilization. Your invoice will be provided to the Henry County Memorial Park Board to be approved as a claim, which will be reviewed by Henry County Commissioners for payment. So both of these are in conjunction with the dirt.
And you're okay with all this? Rita, your board is, okay? With that, I'll make a motion. We approve both of those.
And I will second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Next, item number four on the new business is the road discussion.
I'm sorry, please. I'm, I'm sorry, I was.
We're discussing the roads, US forty and State Road Three intersection.
I just wanted to know if we would support, Joe Copeland sent us all an email, asked if we would support the state projects that are going on there. I don't know if we just wanted to discuss whether we would, we felt like we wanted to support it or not, but I figure on US forty and State Road Three, I don't think we have a lot of say-so in that anyway, both of them being state roads.
Yeah, I don't think we do either.
But it looks like all they're doing basically is putting turn lanes in there with a median strip, which I don't think would hurt that intersection through there anyway.
I agree.
So I don't have a problem supporting that project. The state one oh-three and four hundred south, it looks like all they're doing is putting turn lanes on one oh-three. And it doesn't appear that they're widening one oh-three to do so, they're just making turn lanes at that intersection. So I don't have a problem really with that, so to speak. I'd like to see what it, how it affects the residents in that area, because where those turn lanes, I'm assuming would not have any median strips, and there's no driveways. Looks like they're directly affected, other than possibly two on the one side of the road on one oh-three. I'd like a little more input on that one before we recommend any support. And the third is one oh-three and Indiana Avenue, which I think is more of a city issue than it is the county, and that they're proposing a roundabout. So I'm trying to figure out how that's gonna work, and I think somebody needs to talk to the property owners that look like they may be losing some property on that intersection before I would recommend any letter of support. I would like to hear from them. And if they've been in any kind of discussions with the state. And then on the third one, or the fourth one, was a, at two thirty-four and State Road Thirty-eight in the curve. Apparently, they've already approved the funding for this, and it looks like it's a go-ahead, was my understanding from the email, that they are actually going to turn thirty-eight right there at the point and eliminate where it comes out and just wise into thirty-eight presently, and they're going to make it like a T-road intersection onto thirty-eight into that curve. There again, it's two state roads. I'm not sure how much, whether we say we like it or not, is going to affect anything, but those are the projects that they're looking at doing and wanting commissioner's letter of support if we were so inclined to do so.
So I'm in agreement with you on the US forty and State Road Three. I think that'll help that intersection. I, I agree, I think we need more information on the one oh-three and four hundred south. And the Indiana Avenue is in the city, so.
I'll say, I think we take it under advisement, look till we get some more information before we issue any letter of support.
I agree. I'll make a motion to take it under advisement.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Or you want me to second my own motion?
Well, you just made a suggestion. I made a motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Next, item five is Middletown Interlocal Agreement. This is an interlocal agreement with the town of Middletown for equipment acquisition. And it's agreed that Henry County shall place an order to acquire six Dell Latitude fifty-four thirty rugged laptop computers and related equipment as described on the attached equipment at a cost of twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars thirty-two cents. Upon delivery of the equipment, Henry County shall notify Middletown's Town Marshal of its receipt. Payment by Middletown. Upon being notified of the receipt of the equipment by Henry County, Middletown shall promptly pay the sum set forth in paragraph one above to Henry County and shall take possession of the equipment. Middletown represents and warrants to Henry County the following. Basically, they're going to pay for them, and they're, the equipment belongs to Middletown. Apparently, Henry County has a better purchase agreement with the, with the equipment, and that's why it's coming. They're wanting to bring it through Henry County. The entire agreement, the terms set forth in this document supersede all prior agreements by and between Henry County and Middletown related to the acquisition of equipment. There's no other agreement or understandings written or oral by and between Henry County and Middletown regarding the acquisition of the equipment. This agreement may be altered, may not be altered, modified, terminated, or discharged, except by, except as evidenced by writing approved by Henry County and Middletown in a public meeting and signed by duly authorized representatives of Henry County and Middletown. Any purported modifications that are not approved by Henry County and Middletown at a public meeting and evidenced by a written instrument executed by Henry County and Middletown shall be void.
So with, with doing this, this is gonna save on the town of Middletown about eighteen thousand dollars. And I know Joel has already talked to the town board of Middletown, and they're in agreement.
They approved the payment, I think they are people that's payable, so they have money ready to pay. Reverse counter, by option, so you sell.
I'll make the motion to approve the interlocal agreement. Interlocal equipment acquisition agreement between Henry County and Middletown.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Item number six, under new business, assessor's office, bond of fifteen thousand dollars. It's a bond for fifteen thousand dollars.
Motion to approve the bond.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the bond. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Next, we have an old sheriff's vehicles disposal. We're going to talk about the old sheriff's vehicles that need to be disposed of.
Am I starting?
I, I don't care, you can start.
I was gonna say, this has been ongoing for quite a while. We've had several municipalities in our county reach out for possibly acquiring some of these vehicles. They are well aware of the condition and shape that they're in, but they're willing to take a chance on some of them. They may be better than what they have, or they can put some money into them and make them to where they're decent vehicles for their usage. I believe that we should do some sort of interlocal agreement between us and whichever municipality reaches out within our county, if you're okay with that, Joel? That, that's something that has the approaches with need. I know Catus has reached out to me several times on a couple of vehicles, and we've had some interest in some other municipalities. I think we should supply those needs first, and then I believe that after that, when all those needs have been satisfied, we either auction off the remaining vehicles for disposal because they're, I don't think they have much monetary value at this point.
The others, so we can just, we don't, we can transfer between municipalities?
Any term.
Okay. Okay.
So I guess all we need to do is, has these municipalities come to us? We just need to contact you with basically ID numbers, whatever, okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. So I'll even go as far as to make a motion that we move in that direction to work with municipalities on any of these vehicles, and then, once that's done, we dispose of however, whether it's junked or somebody buy them.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Next, we have Memorial Park Board reappointments.
So we've gotten letters from Rita Fisher and Terry McCall, both expressing interest to remain on the board, and make a motion at this point that we renew both those appointments.
I will second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Welcome again, Rita. Thank you. Next, we have a Henry Community Health. The board is asking that we give Sheldon Dines a reappointment.
I will make the motion to reappoint Sheldon Dine to the Henry County Community Health Board.
Second.
Motion's been. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Henry County Planning Commission, Marcia Gratner, reappointment.
So we received a letter from, uh, Tom Green, uh, that, uh, please consider Marcia Gratner for reappointment for Henry County Planning Commission. Marcia has proven invaluable to the citizens of Henry County, the planning commission in this office. She's always gone above and beyond in her review of matters coming before the planning commission. Her thoughtful investigations and concerned inquiry into sometimes controversial subjects that come before the commission are an example of the citizens that truly cares about our county. And then we'd also received an email from, uh, Marcia that says, "This email is written to express my desire to have a second term on the planning commission. I have appreciated serving Henry County and hope to continue to do so." So with that, I'll make the motion to reappoint Marcia Gratner to the planning commission.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Henry County Board of Zonings Appeals, Marcia Gratner.
So Marcia Gratner was also appointed to, uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals, and she has sent an email that says, "I would very much appreciate your consideration of having me continue on the BZA. It has been very interesting to represent this area as it blends in with the work that I have done with the planning commission." So with that, I'll make a motion to reappoint Marcia Gratner to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Anything from the public?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.